At this time, we'd like to call the regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for October 7, 2014, 5:00 PM to order. First item on the agenda is consent agenda item.
I'll offer the motion to accept them.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any?
Just one comment on the 1D and the CBB financials. It's the committee that I just finished up on. There's a record amount of tax that came in for the lodging at about $17,000 over projected amount. And considering the Holiday Inn being only been having been under the remodeling project and being down by 24, 25 rooms at a time, that's huge that we brought in that much over what we budgeted for. So it's great for our local convention visitors bureau. So when they did hire a new marketing person, my understanding from the CBB director is that he, she may be bringing this person to the next meeting so we can meet her.
I think the increase in the tax shows really that New Ulm is a destination.
Yeah.
People like to come here.
Despite the remodeling.
And, you know, yes, in spite of the remodeling, yeah, that they. It's worth the trip.
Any more comments? Okay. See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paws no. Motion carries. At this time, we're going to jump ahead to item 4A and B or 1 and 2. And, no, it's A and B. And we got a couple of presentations and we'll take them first and then we'll go on with the rest of the meeting so they can be underway. First one is Tim Penny.
Thank you. I think I have enough packets for everyone here.
You do.
Thank you, sir.
I do appreciate the opportunity to present. At this time, I mentioned to the council president that I have babysitting responsibilities for my two grandkids every Tuesday night. So this will allow me to get back in time for that. So again, thank you. I'm Tim Penny, the president of the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. I try to present to your city council every year to give you an update on the work of our foundation. And we continue to do a significant amount of work in the New Ulm and the greater New Ulm area. We expend about $4.5 to $5 million a year in a region that covers 20 counties in south central southeastern Minnesota. We do primarily two things. About 40% of our budget is dedicated to early childhood and about half of our budget is dedicated to entrepreneurial activity. In terms of early childhood work, in the last year or so, we provided a grant to Brown County ECI to do their ECI on Wheels program, which is basically a home visitation program targeted on families with children that may have social and emotional challenges and helping those kids get ready for kindergarten. We also distributed, I think, over 2,000 books to groups and organizations in the county to do early reading programs. Among them is a partnership that we have developed with 24 of the 26 Kiwanis Clubs here in south central southeastern Minnesota. And they in turn work with Head Start or early childhood sites to do reading mentoring and then the books go home with the kids. We have two AmeriCorps personnel that we assign to your community and they help with as teachers aides, help to get kids ready for kindergarten. Those programs are valued at roughly 18 to $20,000 per individual. So that's essentially bringing two staff people to work on early childhood needs in your community at no cost to the community. Last year, we awarded an additional Young Explorer Computer here to your community to use in early childhood work. We've done several of those over the course of time. And a year and a half ago, we were in Brown and Wattenwan Counties with a training program for early childhood providers to help them on the business side of their work but also help them get rated under the state rating system so that they then could have their families eligible for scholarships for early childhood. So that's all on the early childhood side and the work that we've done in your community in the last year or so. On the entrepreneurial side, our most recent loan in your community was to Zenial Boring. And I think it's the second time that we've been involved with that company, which continues to work in the telecommunications field where they do a lot of piping for underground electrical and telecommunications work. They would have to tell you more about their business than I can, but that's one example. Over the past, we've also been involved with Beacon Promotion and some other partnerships to help businesses grow here in your town. And we also have been negotiating with a few people here in town to see if we can't reestablish a service corps of retired executives in New Ulm to help small businesses with the mentoring they need to succeed. We have upwards of 40 score members that are trained and work out of our Owatonna office, now covering several counties just to the east of here. But we are eager to help if we can to reestablish that kind of counseling service for your community, again, in the, with the goal of assisting businesses to succeed. And we also have a new equity fund program and we'll be looking for early-stage investment opportunities for new businesses that might want to grow in southern Minnesota. And last week, we had our first equity fund committee meeting where we did allocate two equity investments, but we have enough resources that we're looking for more opportunities. So I want to make that known to you if you have businesses that are at that stage that you want to bring to our attention. Last but not least, I wanted to mention that part of how we stay connected with the needs over here are not just the trips that I or my staff make here for the projects that we're engaged in, but also because we have Colleen Skilling from Minnesota Valley Testing Labs on our Board of Directors. She's on our audit committee or our finance committee and just brings a lot of good perspective to the work of our foundation to help us make proper investments with our dollars within this region. And to remind you as well, as I always have in my past visits, that we raise 10% or less of our budget locally from cities, counties, corporations, individuals from across the region. But that 10% of our budget really helps us to leverage all the other dollars that we bring in because we do seek support from other foundations that care about entrepreneurship and early childhood. And knowing we have that local support helps us to attract those outside dollars. So we hope you view that as a good return on your investment in our foundation. I do thank you for the support that you've provided us over the course of time. And I think you have a letter requesting an additional allocation for the coming fiscal year. And of course, that's your decision to make. But irrespective of that decision, you know, we'll continue to invest in these two areas in your community as we go forward. So thank you. I maybe took up more time than I needed to.
That's fine.
If you have questions, happy to answer those.
Any questions?
Not really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity. Take care.
The next presenter would be Nicole Grinswick from Region 9.
Hi, thank you for having me. If I place items on here, will they display?
I believe they will.
Okay. Thank you very much for inviting me to be here. Appreciate the opportunity. As I said, my name is Nicole Grinswick-Mikkelsen. I'm the executive director of Region 9 Development Commission. I've been in that position for about two and a half years. And I thought I'd just give a little bit of an overview and then some of the programs and the services that we're doing specifically in New Ulm. Let me know if I'm not loud enough to. But just to kind of explain, it was kind of nice to follow Tim Penny as his 20-county area, Region 9 is the nine counties that is in his 20 counties, so his most western counties. But representing Brown County, I thought I'd give you an idea of who from this county serves on our commission. We have the mayor of Sleepy Eye, Jim Broich, represents cities under 10,000. And then Councilman Schmitz represents New Ulm. And then Freddie Uni represents the townships, the township of Essig he represents. And then Commissioner, County Commissioner Jim Berg is our other representative serving on the commission. So we were created by state statute. We have 37 commissioners total, one mayor, councilman, excuse me, county commissioner, township representative, and then a few other special interest groups and school board positions as well. So that's how we get to 37. But to kind of also follow with Tim Penny's talk about Smith and some of the loans, we are a great partner with Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation and Brown County EDA. So one of our favorite people to work with lately has been Rob Anderson with the county. He's been a great partner as Region 9 does have four different revolving loan funds, so Gap Financing. And a few of the loans that we've worked on recently, one of them has been just your neighbor down the road here, Ada Zinnia. That's been a huge success story, been really happy to support Heather and the team there. Also, the Treats Home Center buyers was also a loan that we're working on right now, so that will be soon to be announced. And also soon to be announced, closing on the 15th, will be another boutique downtown. So really happy to be a partner in that to restore downtown vitality. So again, really appreciate the partnership that we have with Rob Anderson and the county here. A few of the different items I wanted to kind of share, I'll put this up here if that I'll kind of talk a little bit. Region 9, we house the Area Agency on Aging, MINRA, so it's the Minnesota River Area Agency on Aging. So about half of our staff in the Mankato office for Region 9 are working in the aging program. So a few of the different things I wanted to mention is right now, it's Medicare open enrollment time. And so we have a few different sites, the enrollment sites here in the county. And that kind of outlays, and I can leave those handouts as well. So that's one of the different things that we're working on here. In addition, I should kind of mention a few other things that the aging program is working on here in the county. The New Ulm League of Women Voters developed a community forum that was April 30th that was titled "The Aging Population Shift Is New Ulm Ready." And that forum was 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening at New Ulm City Library. And the New Ulm Cable Access TV broadcasted that event and KNUJ Radio did a simulcast of the event. So other, a few other things that are going on. The forum also began with providing updates on aging demographics, a few other things like that. So if you hear MINRA, the Minnesota River Area Agency, that is part of Region 9, so in our office in Mankato. A few other items that have been going on is that our aging staff also met with Brown County United Way Director, provided an update on the aging demographics and the services that are available. And also, we attend the Brown County Senior Services Group, which meets bimonthly in New Ulm. And then a few other things I wanted to mention in addition to the Medicare and the services that we're doing in the aging program is overall, I know we have a strong transportation focus here in New Ulm with the Corridors of Commerce funding that was announced. Again, Region 9 is a member of the Highway 14 Partnership and we are a strong advocate for a lot of the different transportation projects here as well. Also this morning, I know Councilman Webster, we did a little bit of safe routes to school planning this morning. Region 9 is proud to be doing the planning for all of the different schools in New Ulm for safe routes to school. So that's a partnership that we have with MINDOT and our transportation, Josh Pearson and others were out this morning, looking at ways that we can help encourage healthy lifestyles and children to be able to get to bike or to walk to school safely. Another item that we're doing in New Ulm is another great partnership is with Region 9 with the New Ulm Chamber, New Ulm Telecom. And Citizens Bank is holding bimonthly social media breakfasts. So I'll kind of hold up the flyer for the next one. It's kind of a neat initiative that we started here in New Ulm. And again, I can leave more handouts. But what the social media breakfast is, is just another opportunity that we're able to kind of help entrepreneurs and small business owners kind of say, how can you get on social media? How do you use Twitter? How do you use Facebook, LinkedIn, blogging to help create your business, expand your business, find employees, get the word out there, et cetera? So every other month, they have a different topic. And because of the support, for example, the sponsors, KNUJ and SAM for this one, we're able to have, it's for free to anyone who wants to attend. All you have to do is register. Again, it's just a really great collaboration with the Chamber, Region 9, and New Ulm Telecom. And again, it was great that I followed Tim with Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation because this is another example of kind of how Region 9 is really a collaborator across the whole region. And so for the greater region of Tim's 20-county area, this is a local foods trade show and festival that will be happening in beginning of next month in Rochester. So again, we're focusing on the whole three states of Iowa, Wisconsin, and Minnesota to help local growers and suppliers to help get them in front of different buyers. So there'll be a trade show and festival. And again, I'll move this up here a little bit so you can see a few more of the details. But that's the beginning of next month in Rochester, the Mayo Civic Center. So again, Region 9 is really happy to be a partner in that because we all know that our local economy is very much agriculture and manufacturing. So if we can help those growers and producers meet the buyers and get those products in more of the stores nearby here. I wanted to take a moment to ask for any questions because a lot of different topics. We're involved in a lot of different things where we do hazard mitigation planning, community planning, downtown revitalization, a whole slew of different things. But I haven't had the opportunity to be here, so I wanted to just make sure and ask if you had any questions. And luckily, we do have a commissioner here as well, so I hope, I'm sure you get updates as well. But questions about what Region 9 is working on, areas of focus, anything I can help with?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just, is this feast that you're talking about here, is this an annual thing or is this New Ulm?
This is a first annual, so we're hoping.
On a yearly basis?
We're hoping to make that.
In Rochester or moving it around?
I personally am hoping that we'll move it around, but for now, especially because Mayo is one of the sponsors and a few other reasons, and it's such a large civic center, that's why Rochester was chosen, but.
Ulm would be a nice location for one of them.
Yeah. Selfishly, I'm trying to move it a little bit west, but this is the very first year. And so Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation granted Renewing the Countryside with a one-big-thing grant last year. And that's what's their big grant every year is the one big thing. And so out of that movement came the feast local foods conversation. And so even though it's in Rochester, I was quick to raise my hand and say, Region 9 wants to be a part of that because we definitely have a lot of, whether it's hydroponic lettuce growers to, you know, Angie's Kettle Corn used to be, was one of our loans back in the day, to all of those types of individuals. We want to have more people to point at and say, that was one of our loans and.
My second question, and maybe Ruth Ann can answer it too, but the safe routes to school, are you going to be involved in the ground floor with our new school development and getting safe streets out to that school, which is going to be a little bit on the outside of town?
I don't know that answer right now, but.
I mean, I know they're in early planning stages, so it'd be nice if you guys were involved early on.
I think the answer is yes.
I would assume so, but.
I would assume it'd be an ongoing planning conversation, but for this year, we have the planning grant to do all of New Ulm schools. But of course, as they design and look at creating new schools, then I would assume that that is the plan. But as that progresses, I can continue to give the council more updates on that.
Great. Thank you. That's my two questions.
Anybody else?
Why don't you, why don't you tell everybody what the Corridors for Commerce announcement was today?
Sure. I apologize because I don't want to tell the council information if it's.
Oh, we already know, but people are listening.
Okay, wonderful. So the Corridors of Commerce announcement today, as we said that we, and I know your mayor is president of Highway 14 Partnership, wonderful. It was announced today that Highway 14 and Highway 15, that intersection, $700,000 will be to improve the connection between New Ulm and Mankato. And also in the advanced design work for improvement to the intersection, and that will also improve the bottleneck for Key Freight Corridor, the connection for rural Minnesota. So as soon as I got that email today, I was very, very excited, made sure I marked that for the announcement. So wonderful news for this area.
Yes.
Any other questions I can help with?
No.
Nope.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'll leave a few handouts if that's okay? Thank you. Okay.
Okay. We'll go on with the meeting. Item 2A, consider motion approving the issue on the lawful gambling permit for the Church of St. Mary's to conduct raffle gambling at the Church of St. Mary's.
I'll offer the motion.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the gambling permit. Any discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paws no. Motion carries. Item 2B was deleted from the agenda, so we'll go on to item 3A, number one. Consider for approval a petition from Glenn Wake to rezone from our A Agriculture Residential District to our One Residential Family District, the property legally described as Part 1, Outlet 174.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any questions?
This was before the Planning Commission. And after the public hearing, the Commission unanimously recommended approval. Basically, this is not controversial at all. This is just a small piece of property that's going to be sold to a neighbor and it should be zoned as our one.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paws no. Motion carries. Item 3A, number two, consider resolution approving the application from Camille Waifels requesting a conditional use permit to place a special purpose fence on the property located at 1325 11 North Street.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second off the resolution. Waive reading. Any discussion?
This was in front of the Planning Commission that did recommend approval with conditions. Part of the issue was that the fence was already in place and that's always, that's always a problem. But the applicant just was unaware of the fence ordinance. But basically, we talked quite a bit about the restrictions, about the need to only have the fence up when the court is being used. And when not in use, the netted fence would be gathered and tied to the corner posts. With those conditions, there was unanimous approval.
Thank you. Any more discussion? CNN Finance Director, please call the role.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockham.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 3A, number three, consider resolution approving the application from Tom Holler on behalf of Holler Real Estate, LLC to allow commercial excavating and natural materials on the property at 1301 to 1417 North Garden Street and 1201 to 1327 Elm Street.
I'll offer the resolution. Waive the reading, approving with the conditions this application to allow excavation as stated.
Second.
We got a motion and a second off the resolution. Waive the reading. Any discussion?
I'd just like to note that, as you can see from our issue sheet, the Planning Commission did not unanimously approve this, recommend the approval. I did speak to the one dissenting vote after the meeting, and the concern expressed was with the problem of drainage. And I'm sure, as you know from your review of the material, of the attached materials, the excavation of natural materials will not increase the amount of water that's coming down. But there was still a concern by the dissenting voter that the city should do something about the problem with water before we do anything else with this property. And so I've asked, I would ask that we have this engineer talk about, talk about the problem that we had this spring with water coming down this site and what sort of impact this project would have on that.
Mr. Kayla?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just looking to see if there was a map in your packet here. This particular area is on North Garden Street, approximately 15th North Street, 16th North Street in that area. It's part of what we would call the Garden Street drainage area in terms of the stormwater drainage travels down, there's a map in here now, travels down to the 5th North Street Holding Pond, then continues down past the existing high school area and down to South Park and into the Cottonwood River area. So that particular drainage area is quite large. This area that is proposed to be developed or mined for development is somewhat smaller and contributes to that area. It has a 10-year piping design storm, which is the normal municipal sizing that is used in the city. In early June, we had, I think, four, four and a half inches of rain in 90 minutes, which equates to about a 200-year storm. So there wasn't much chance for the system to handle that type of storm. If this area is developed, it actually would offer an opportunity to mitigate or improve the inlet capacity in that area. Because if it is developed, it triggers the stormwater ordinance both locally and federally and statewide. So that would require the need to mitigate any runoff increases that would occur from this particular development, which we don't anticipate. But we could also work with the developer to increase the inlet capacity, which to some degree has already been actually taken place up there. They've done some rock entrance culverts, which would slow some of the sediment down. So in my estimation, you know, if nothing happens there with regard to development, the stormwater system would stay the same. But this would actually trigger the need to upgrade some of that inlet capacity in that area.
Mr. President, just to be clear, when you're talking about development, I think you're talking about the plan, the proposed use of the property is to first remove the sand and gravel and then develop it as housing. And it's when the housing goes in that we'd have to.
Well, it's actually would have to do with the disturbance of the land itself. That's what, that's what triggers the need to conform to the stormwater regulations. So the mining is only going to take place to the extent that it would be created to create residential lots. So that is a particular time that the stormwater issues would have to be dealt with. There are other, there's more area from the top of the hill and also from the east side of Garden Street that contributed to this. So this particular area is very small. It just happens that the drainage from on top of the hill comes through that particular area and had created a problem with that big rain. But I'm fairly confident that we would end up with a better product than we have now.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I, I have some concerns with this project. As we know, there's been a petition by the local neighbors across, live across the street. And I've talked with several of them. This is in my ward. I've looked at where this area is. The requirements for the conditional use permit require that the project meets seven requirements. And I don't think that it does based on nothing more than the fact that the first one requires that the conditional use will not substantially diminish or impair the property values within immediate vicinity. I personally don't think that it meets that requirement. Who wants to have a mining operation across the street from their house and you can't tell me that that won't change property values? It will. Again, there's nothing against the Hollers and their project and what they want to do, but we're supposed to meet these requirements. The second one is F, and it says adequate measures are taken to protect against odor, noise, and site pollution. This is a mining operation. This is going to be noisy. This is right across the street from residential area. I haven't heard anything in the project or anything that, unless I missed it, that there's going to be adequate measures to protect against the noise. Yeah, buffer zone, buffer zones don't really control noise, that I'm aware of anyway. So these are the two areas that I don't think this project meets the criteria. And I know sometimes we've had some tough decisions on the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding some of these projects that come up, but I personally don't think these two meet. Unless somebody can convince me otherwise, I'll be voting no on this.
Well, at the, at the Planning Commission, we discussed this for quite some time. And the one thing that we had to focus on is that this, you know, 30, 30 years ago, that the entire area, including the place where the church now sits and that whole thing. area, including the place where the church now sits, and that whole thing was a hill waiting to be mined for gravel. And so, piece by piece by piece, each time there was a request for a conditional use permit to allow mining so that the gravel could be removed, and then later houses could be built, each time the city granted that. And the mining operation, as I understand it, will take two to three years before the material, the gravel or the sand, is removed, and then at that time, rather high, the plan is for rather large lots, rather high-end homes to be put in there. So, you know, I think that from the point of view of planning, I think we have to take more of a longer view on this. First, like I said, the city has, does allow excavation and mining within the city with a conditional use permit, and has, as time gone by, allowed the entire area to be mined. This is the last section that's going to be mined. And in the long run, this will add to the value of the area. The city will now have lots, homes that will be paying property taxes, and that will be overall to the benefit of the city, including the neighbors. With regard to the noise and the fumes and that sort of thing, I believe that the staff believes that there's going to be adequate controls for that, and if you've got any specific questions, I would defer to the staff recommendation. But, you know, I understand your position, but that's not, that's not the way I voted on the Planning Commission. No.
Any more comments?
Could we hear from the Hollas to let us know what they might have in place to mitigate or, you know?
My name is Matt Mathewitz with MR Paving Excavating.
John Holla.
Did you understand the question?
Yeah, I did. As far as the noise or air pollution, all of those things are required to be, we have to fall into certain requirements by the Minnesota Safety and Health Administration and OSHA as well. They all govern those rules and regulations. They will be followed. As far as the property values, I think Counselor Webster explained that similarly to how I would explain those. I don't know if John has anything else he'd like to add?
No, I think it was explained just fine.
Anybody have any questions, Will?
I guess my question would be, is we talk about a time period, and that's for sure the time period, that's all the longer that would be, the mining would take place, or...
Sure, to try to answer that question, you kind of base things off of certain calculated volumes and based off of what the City of New Ulm construction projects have taken over the past five to 10 years. That's kind of how we come up with a timeframe, and their goal is to develop this property, so the sooner they can get it to that point, you know, they can start taking advantage of what their long-term goal is. So, estimating the value of material that's there, two to three years should be sufficient to get that material out of the way, so that development of that property can start to begin to take place.
And is that year-round mining?
It is not, nope. It would go through the summer months and then through the winter frozen months. There would be virtually no activity during that time.
Within the 5.53 acres that this encompasses, how much of that is going to be mined?
What's going to happen is, a significant amount of that will be, I'd say probably about three-quarters of it, and what will happen is, there's a hill there now, and that hill will be taken down to the existing elevation essentially of North Garden Street, so if you can envision the sidewalk coming through, that hill will be brought down to that elevation, so that homes can be set in there at that elevation for lots.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Holla, would you explain to the city council, as you did to the Planning Commission, the work that's going to be done to slow any water down? Remember, you talked about, I can't remember the words that you used, but...
Yeah, there's certain stormwater management practices that will be used, including rock checks, earthen berms, and other measures that may need to take place to slow the water down. It'll take the sediment out, and then the same amount of water will still release into the storm sewer system that it had previously.
It'll just be slower?
Right. What we do is, we slow the water down so that the sediment can come out, and then it will still be released, just like it was before, just at a slower pace essentially is what we have.
Will this be 100% of the sediment removed, or 98, or 75, or what percentage?
You know, when we have MPCA permits, the goal is, like Mr. Kayler said, on a 10-year rainfall event, that all the sediment would be removed before it enters the storm sewer system. There's always that 100- or 200-year rain event that isn't predictable or isn't planned for, and at that point, just like anywhere else, there can be sediment that would leave the site. It would be cleaned up and then restored back as it was originally.
Thank you.
And current hours of operation, from what I'm reading, is from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
Those are potential hours. Normally, it wouldn't be that much, especially in this area. It would probably be maybe one or two days a week, and then when there's a busy project, then there could be potential to be Monday through Saturday at those hours. And those are obviously, if there's something going on, you know, if there's something that would take place in the area, we would be more than willing to work with the homeowners and the area residents with that.
And just one other thing. Would you talk a little bit about the restoration of one particular site that is going to more or less stay as a hill? I can't remember what street it is, if it's 13th, you know, not all of it is going to be taken down.
Right, and what will be done there is a buffer will be left by the owners of the property to kind of keep and maintain a space there, and it'll be restored to certain slopes that will be designed by an engineer. The grass will be reestablished with either topsoil or organic material before, to make sure that there's organic material there for vegetation to be established, which will also help control any rainfall or rain events at that time as well.
Will Tom Holla, or will Holla Real Estate be the developers of the property in terms of putting homes, these magnificent homes on there, or is it going to be left to somebody buying a piece of property and doing it themselves?
Buying a piece of property and do it themselves.
Oh, okay.
Those are the larger lots.
So, you're going to be selling the lots?
Correct.
Okay, so there is no real estate in terms of being development-only, laying out the lots? What about street sewage, et cetera?
I can answer that. They're going to have Bolton and Mink out of Sleepy Eye. They're an engineering and design firm. Any of those requirements will come through if this is approved, and obviously, Mr. Kayler and his staff will have to approve, and you guys as well will see all those as that's developed, but I believe, speaking on the behalf of them, is their goal is to get that established, those plans approved, and then they'll essentially develop that property and then sell those lots individually.
Okay.
I have one more question, in thinking about the time, the timeframe of this. I know they say they want to get this done in as fast as they can. On these conditional use permits, can we put a time limit? Can we say it needs to be done in a certain period of time? You know, not that they get this and then they drag it out for five to six years, and there's mining over there.
I think you can put a durational limit on the permit, if you want to.
With that in mind, I mean, is anybody here ready to set a time limit, or do you think we might need another until the next meeting to take a look at what might be a time on the conditional use permit?
I guess I got a question to Ryan. Have we ever set a time limit on a conditional use permit for mining?
Since I've been here, Mr. Schonberg, are you aware of, and the answer is no. The other thing that might be of interest, I think, is if you want to maybe turn this around, just for the ability to look at it from a different direction, and that is, the Hollas could sell these lots off as they currently are, and each one of the buyers could go in and remove the soils to create a lot that's buildable for them. So, over a period of time, you still have the noise, you still would have the disruption, you still have all the things that would be present with a mining operation, except with mining, there are much more controls over it, I believe. And so, you know, no matter what you decide, one way or the other, the same noise, the same activities could occur. It's just that somebody's going to load up all the sand and gravel and haul it someplace just to get it out of there so they can build houses. In this particular case, obviously, they want to do the mining first, but I guess I do agree that, you know, from a conditional use permit, one of the conditions could be a timeframe.
I guess, I don't think I'd be in favor of a timeframe. I don't know why we'd want to do it. I mean, we know what the goal is, is to get it out of there, and even if it takes four years, what's the difference?
And I wouldn't either, because as I understand it, basically, they're going to be using the sand and gravel to do projects that they do for the local governments. You know, that's what makes it efficient. That's why they can come in with a lower bid than anybody else, because they own the sand and gravel. So, I just, I don't think it makes any sense to try to guess whether it's going to take three years, or four years, or five years for us to give them enough work that they finish this off. I think we should leave it to the entrepreneurs to decide how best to do this and not micromanage. That's my, those are my thoughts.
Any more comments?
I guess my question is to Ruth Ann then, about this gravel. You said the gravel is going to be used for, it has a purpose, or that's used for...
Well, right, I, right.
The product being mined is the equivalent of sandbox sand, it says. Doesn't say anything about gravel.
I can try to answer that question the best I can. A lot of projects have certain specifications, and certain materials are required by engineers, and this happens to be one product that can be used fairly often, whether it's a commercial building project, or a street reconstruction project, or a new highway development, or grading of projects. So, this material is a material that can be used on any of those types of products, or projects, I should say.
So, it'll be, if we have some reconstruction, and you get the bid, this is where it's going to go?
Yes, yeah, essentially, we're helping the Hollas develop this property, and we just happen to be a revenue or an avenue where that material or source can be used.
It's not going to be filling up sandboxes, no.
Wait a minute.
There is no more questions. We do have a motion resolution on the floor, and Finance Director, you want to call the roll?
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
No.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Now, we'll go to item 5A, consider motion approving the change order number one to the New Ulm Municipal Airport Taxway A Reconstruction Project.
I'll offer the motion.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See and none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 6A, consider acceptance of a list of claims paid in the amount of $5,760,817.24.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See and none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 6B.
I do have, what is ACH, Ach and checks?
ACH would be the, you don't actually write out a check. It's a file that goes to the bank. It stands for Automatic Clearinghouse, Automated...
Good. I thought it was, you know, like Ach Song. Thank you.
Okay, item 6B, consider approval of list of claims to be paid in the amount of $2,47,642.33.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion on any? See and none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. With no more business, be concluding. Meeting adjourned.